That that person would advocate for them, or if there's a problem with permitting, that they would help make sure that permits got out into their hands in a quickly and expedited way. We also, you know, are looking at other suggestions from downtown, for instance, where a lot of commercials are filmed. Right now, it's very difficult to get the big trucks that people need into many of the parking structures. So why not change the code for the construction of our new parking structures to allow for nineteen feet or whatever they need for the clearance, to be able to make sure that filming easily fits into our downtown buildings. Similarly, a lot of production companies said that the parking lots were charging them the private parking lots exorbitant rates. And I said, "Well, the city of Los Angeles has parking lots everywhere. Why not look at opening those up at costs? We don't want to, we probably can't afford to subsidize it, but at least just get back our costs, make it much cheaper than some of the private parking lots to make sure that they have a place to film." And then again, as I mentioned before, having plug-ins on the streets in high-impact areas like downtown or Hollywood where there's lots of filming, have the Department of Water and Power build out the plug-ins for people to be able to have all their equipments there without having to have a generator on the street.
Kinds of things that a Films-Ar might take care of. Would this replace the Film LA organization that's currently there?
No, Film LA exists outside of City Hall, and right now, they are the city-selected entity for giving out all the permits, a one-stop shop essentially. And we're putting out a new request for proposals that Film LA and anybody else who's interested will apply to, to renew that process. And in our RFP, we actually have a tighter turnaround time now for permits. We have smoother community relations to make sure that residents aren't disrupted, businesses aren't disrupted, but that those rules are clear and clean for everybody, so that we can make sure production can be in our neighborhoods. And also, we're looking within that RFP of making sure that we bring down whatever costs that we can here locally. So Film LA helps us do that, but they're outside of the city. This Films-Ar would ultimately be able to answer to the mayor and to the city council and help them implement pro-filming policies in LA.
Thanks for the explanation, Council President Eric Garcetti. Thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Always my pleasure.
And so, the incentives to keep film and television production in Los Angeles were approved with a vote of thirteen ayes. L.A. City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. You can watch city council meetings live or view past meetings by going to the city's website at lacity.org and follow the instructions for video on demand. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And now, those of you living in the Harbor area can go to the San Pedro City Hall, located at 638 South Beacon Street, Room 700 in San Pedro, and also participate in council meetings via video teleconferencing. Remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m., and on Sundays at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending March 27th, 2009. On behalf of Jerry Mendez and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Hi, I'm State Controller John Chung. Would you like to help hard-working families get the refunds they deserve? By volunteering as a tax preparer, you can put money back into the pockets of working families, which means more money for our local economy. If you'd like to join our efforts in preparing tax returns for qualified residents of L.A. County, visit eitc-la.com and sign up for the free training we offer that best fits your schedule. A few hours of your time will make a big difference in someone's life. Thank you.
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the city council meeting for Tuesday, March 31st, 2009. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chamber, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And we also are in Van Nuys City Hall the first Friday of each month, usually. And I want to thank those council members who are here on time. We have the Northeast Valley well-represented, and Council Members Alarcon and Cardenas are both here, pursuing to the council rules. And the rest of the council is now late, so if they will please make their way down. Only Mr. Weiss is excused today on personal business. That means we're expecting Ms. Gruel, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Labange, Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry, Ms. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Smith, Mr. Wesson, and Mr. Zine, who has just walked in. The San Fernando Valley is three-for-three, so everybody over the hill who lives closer should already be here as well. But if those council members will please make their way down immediately, Mr. Wesson, Mr. Smith, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Reyes, Ms. Perry, Mr. Parks, Mr. Labange, Mr. Weezer, Ms. Hahn, and Ms. Gruel. Thank you, Mr. Smith. We now have every Valley member here, except for Ms. Gruel, and nobody besides myself from outside the Valley. So with that, I want to again welcome those members of the public that are here, as well as those who are viewing us on Channel 35, which broadcasts our meetings through the city's cable system, each meeting, and rebroadcast in the evening. We also are available online at lacity.org, where there is a wealth of information about your city departments and city-elected officials and services to help improve the quality of your life here in Los Angeles. But if you click on the left side, you can watch our council meetings with live-streaming webcasts, and that is also archived for posterity as well, so any of the past council meetings are available there, too. Finally, you can use your telephone and call into Council Phone, which is 213-621-CITY. Again, that number is 213-621-CITY, and you can listen in to any of the council meetings or any of our committee meetings as well. There's also podcasts available online at lacity.org. Our agendas are available online at lacity.org, or here in person in council chambers, or at the city clerk's office. Those are made available 72 hours in advance, or 24 hours in advance for our special meeting agendas. All items receive either a public hearing in committee or here in council. If they've received a hearing already in committee, it requires a council member to reopen the public hearing. Otherwise, if it is not a card here filled out by a member of the public, we'll trigger a public hearing. So if you'd like to be heard on any of those items on the agenda, feel free to fill out a speaker card and hand it to the sergeants-at-arms, and we'll make sure that they see that and we get that in the mix. Finally, there is a part of the meetings which are for general public comments, for items that are not on the agenda but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the city council. And you can just fill that out, put "public comment" in the upper-right corner, and we'll be sure to hear your public comments. Again, that's a two minutes on the clock right here of per speaker. Thank you to council members Alarcon, Cardenas, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Zine, and Gruel. We are just awaiting now Ms. Hahn, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Labange, Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Wesson. So thank you for your patience. It is now about seven minutes after the hour. If the sergeants-at-arms can assist us, sit for the late council members, and as soon as they are here, we will begin. Thank you. Thank you again to the council members who are here, council members Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, and Zine. We're still awaiting those council members who are tardy, council members Hahn, Weezer. Hahn is here, thank you, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Labange, Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Wesson. I did see Mr. Labange downstairs in the garage, so expect him shortly, and as soon as we have one more member, we will have a quorum. Now there's Mr. Parks, so Mr. Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum. Mr. President.
Okay, council members, we're going to run through the business of the day, so if you'd direct your attention to any items you'd like to be called special, if we can go through the first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Parks moves, and Ms. Hahn seconds, without objection, those are approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Rosendahl moves, and Mr. Zine seconds, without objection, those will be approved as well. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute.
All right, if I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our pledge of allegiance, and if I can ask our President Pro Tem and Controller-elect, Ms. Gruel, if you'll lead us in the pledge. Ms. Gruel?
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. If you put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. But he had the fun.
Thank you very much. If we can run through the agenda, please.
First items on the agenda, items one through three are street lighting district ordinances, notice for public hearing. Council should have twelve members. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please, while we await Mr. Weezer, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Wesson. Let's hold those on the desk. Next item?
Item four is the fashion district property and business improvement district, notice for public hearing, and there is a card on that.
Let's call that special for card. Next items, please.
Items five through thirteen are items for which public hearings have been held. There is a request on item eight to continue that one day.
Okay, is there any objection to continuing number eight to the first of April? No joke, we'll continue that, then. Yes, Ms. Hahn?
Six.
Number six for Ms. Hahn, Mr. Rosendahl?
Five, I want to send back to Public Works Committee.
Number thirteen, you mean?
Number five.
Okay.
And thirteen, of course, I also, have we come to ten minutes under?
Yeah, we're between five and thirteen right now.
Yeah, and thirteen, we're sending back to Public Works as well.
Five wasn't at Public Works, it's the special gas tax sheet?
Right, we want to go to Public Works and flesh it out.
Okay, let's just hold that on the desk right now for a second, make sure that's good. And thirteen, you wanted to send back right now?
Right.
Definitely, okay? Without objection, we'll send thirteen back to Public Works. Other specials, colleagues? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next items, please.
Items fourteen through twenty-six are items for which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration. Items fourteen and fifteen are commission reappointments. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please, if there's no objection to considering these items, those are before us, and let's hold fourteen and fifteen on the desk.
And, Mr. President, you do have a number of cards.
Which items have cards?
Seventeen, eighteen, twenty-two, twenty-four, and twenty-six.
Okay, we'll hold those special for cards from the public and open and close the remaining public hearings. With that, we'll go ahead, any specials, colleagues? Mr. Reyes is here as well, so we have twelve members. If no other specials from items fourteen through twenty-six, let's go ahead on the balance. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. We can take up items--
Mr. President, may I have sixteen forthwith to the man?
Of course, we'll send sixteen forthwith for Ms. Hahn. We can take up items one through three now that we have twelve members. Please open the roll on those, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, those are approved as well. And if we can go to the supplemental agenda, please.
On the supplemental agenda, item twenty-seven is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay, anybody wishing to call twenty-seven special? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next items?
Items twenty-eight through thirty are items for which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we have a card on twenty-eight, but not on the other two, so we'll close the public hearings on twenty-nine and thirty. Any specials? Twenty-nine and thirty? If not, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, those are approved. I'll take us to our general public comment.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Zine?
To request the police department, nine and nineteen, fourthwith, please.
Nineteen, fourthwith.
Nine and nineteen.
Nine and nineteen?
Thank you.
Without objection, we'll send those forward. Now it's time for our general public comment. This is for items that are not on the agenda but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the council. There's two minutes per speaker, the clock there to help guide your time, and our first is Rafael Nadal. After that will be Sky Anderson.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to take a second to honor a giant in our state, Sesar Chavez. He fought for, fought hard for people that were oftentimes down on their luck. Ladies and gentlemen, last night, I faxed a letter to President Barack Obama urging him to do more and to have more funding for veterans homeless. However, as I look at our state, I wonder what is anything is being done to help senior citizens, homeless senior citizens, especially women down on their luck? I wonder, ladies and gentlemen, what is Mr. Sedilio, who sits on this street, is doing to help these homeless people? I know that Mr. Sedilio takes rights from time to time to solicit donors on the West Side, but I wonder if his depth to the reality of what's happening in this district. I think we need to do more for homeless citizens. I cannot believe that we are allowing this to happen in our city. This is very real, and this is very sad. I know that the gentlemen here are busy with many other things on their agenda, but I cannot think of something more important, ladies and gentlemen, than homeless senior citizens that are living in our state. I wonder what is wrong with this picture? We have a man who's running for higher office in the name of Mr. Gil Sedilio, and he doesn't have any time, has he done anything to help this homeless citizen? So I'm going to ask you, gentlemen, I'm going to beg you, gentlemen, to do something for senior citizens. I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nadal. Our next speaker is Mr. Sky Anderson, and after that is Dr. Clyde Williams. Good morning, Mr. Anderson.
I'm Sky Anderson, I'm a resident of Hollywood. I didn't come here thinking that other people want to talk about the homeless, but that's my theme. At one point, I was homeless. The police would come almost every night and tell me I had to move in the middle of the night, particularly if I was sleeping on church property. I couldn't own anything, because people would steal it. Just going to the bathroom was a major problem. At one point, I had cancer of the bladder and I was going to die. I surrendered completely to God. Today, I'm a viable seventy-five-year-old human being. Mr. Garcetti, when you first got elected, you would meet people in your office on Saturday afternoon, members of the public, you don't do that anymore.
Just a correction, sir, I still do the office hours.
They told me you didn't do that anymore. I keep trying to contact a lady named Sarah, who you told me was your advocate for the homeless. She's never available. I looked up her profile on the internet. She's a beautiful woman, she lives in Pasadena, she makes good money, she graduated from Yale. Yet she doesn't have time to talk to someone who's advocate for the homeless, and she's supposed to represent the homeless. There's something sick about all this, Mr. Garcetti. You're a beautiful man, you're charismatic, you're intelligent, you're talented. I'm asking you to take that talent and help the homeless one way or another. Pride goes before every downfall. I don't know, Mr. Clinton was a handsome man to meet all these--
We'll make sure she comes and talks to you today in council, sir.
And what happened? He got caught having sex--
Sir, we'll hold your time, but if you'd like to talk to her directly, we'll make sure we can make that happen right here today.
I don't know what you complained about, I can't hear you.
I'm saying we can make sure you can sit down with her today, right here in council chambers.
With Sarah?
Yep.
Okay, well, I needed to talk to you to get her to talk to me. But, you know, pride goes before a fall. Mr. Clinton was full of pride, and he had sex with this beautiful woman, and he almost got impeached. You could go out tomorrow, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Dr. Clyde Williams is our next speaker. After that will be Zuma Dog.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno. Caltrans and their state route 710, the gap closure. They propose that this is route-neutral. However, all routes begin in El Sereno, therefore it is not route-neutral. They have totally inadequate outreach for the northeast L.A. When El Sereno residents were finally involved, we got a hundred people out, and we only got thirty minutes for a hundred people to ask questions. Total lack of representation. Representation, oh, Council District One is not represented on either the Steering Committee nor the Technical Advisory Committee, although it goes through most of CD One's northeastern communities. L.A. is represented by only two departments, and they sporadically attend. The tunnels will be feasible. I helped build the first red line. But the South Tunnel opening, or the portal, will be in L.A., in El Sereno, in all alternative routes. It will require approximately four million cubic yards of excavation and two million cubic yards of backfill. It will only impact upon El Sereno. We get no benefits. We will have to endure any collapses, any impacts, and the eventual fire in the tunnel. Caltrans and Al Hamra, they actually opened the project that they're conducting now, and the mayor of Al Hamra and the councilperson from Al Hamra opened it with Caltrans on L.A. City property, not in Al Hamra. So we would like to have them take back the impacts to Al Hamra and protect El Sereno.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. Zuma Dog is our next speaker. After that is Lynn Brown. Good morning, Mr. Dog.
Yes, I'd like to say those first two commenters about the homeless, boy, it just really got my heart racing. If I could please say some quiet, you know, this is the three, if you want to know, if you want to know what three years feels like, people, city council members, hello! Yes!
Sir, if you'll please lower your voice, we're listening to you, and if--
Oh, just for the record, you're interrupting me, and if you want to go back three years--
Mr. Dog, we'll give you three seconds back, but please, if you'll make sure, you please lower your voice and not yell at the council.
Okay, then can I request, is this too loud? I'm talking in my damn voice. Okay, everybody else is here talking. All right, now let me tell you something, people, if you want to know what three years feels like, it's today, the first time you've seen Zuma Dog. Thank you, the first time you ever saw me come through here. That's three years, it feels like ten. Okay, let me, yes, it does, and let me tell you something, you've never seen me on my worst day. Yes, I am homeless. Yes, it started over the Venice Beach ordinance that we're still having problems over, and you know, I wanted to come here all warm and fuzzy and happy for my three-year anniversary, but let's do a little backstory here. You're talking to a guy that's really in big, big, deep, 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 deep trouble, and I wish some council member would maybe pull me over and say, "We can help you get off the streets." I lived on the streets, my dad died a year ago, and I came, I came back a year ago from where my dad died. I've been living in the streets ever since, haven't slept in a bed in a year. I've been doing this for three years, and all I've tried to do is come here, I didn't like what I saw at all when I came in here for what I thought was one time, so I thought I'd come here and try to represent some people, they couldn't come here. I don't know how the whole city really liked what I had to say and how I had to say it, I have no idea how it all happened. But I just tried to come here to try to pretend to be a leader, to try to set an example, to try to show people some things that were going on here. I am shocked at what I've seen over these three years. The city is over, it's bankrupt, you squandered it, you blew it, and if the homeless people were any one of your special interest people, you'd have Skid Row fixed in a second!
Thank you, Mr. Dog. Lynn Brown is our next speaker. After that will be Melrose Larry Green.
Good morning. Good morning, council members, and thank you for this opportunity to speak to you wherever you are.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning, President Garcetti. I'm the National Trail Coordinator for Equestrian Trails Incorporated, a sixty-five-year-old organization with over four thousand members, and I'm coming today to plead for your help and your cooperation regarding the equine advisory committee. According to the latest statistics from the American Horse Council, the California horse industry contributes more than $7 billion to the California GPN annually. According to the Department of Health, we have over fifty thousand horses in Los Angeles County, not counting all the unregistered backyard horses. On February 6th, City Council unanimously approved Wendy Gruel's motion, which created an equine advisory committee-- an equine advisory committee. Equestrians were excited and very pleased to have a committee, as other groups have advisory committees. And ETI is grateful, uh, for the help from Councilman Labange and from, uh, President Garcetti in helping organize this committee and push it through. People have applied for appointment. This is the part that's important. I'm hearing people talking and not listening. Uh, people have applied for appointment, as this committee can address many important issues affecting both the city of Los Angeles and our equine community. I especially want to thank Councilman Labange and Council, uh, President Garcetti for their prompt response on this. However, although many of you have made your selection as to whom you wish to appoint, we are unable to move forward until a councilperson officially notifies Councilwoman Wendy Gruehl's office in the persona of Jim Dantona, the planning deputy. Notification is very simple. Either you phone or email Mr. Dantona with your selection. If you've not chosen and appointed, Equestrian Trails has many highly qualified candidates, as does Councilwoman Gruehl. We can help you find equestrians in your district. Presently, without your notification, nothing can move forward.
Thank you.
Please, 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 help us get this up and running. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited about that, and we'll make sure we spread that word. Melrose Larry Green is our next speaker, and then Cliff Schumacher will follow. Very nice suit, Larry.
Good morning, thank you. A good morning. Last Sunday morning around three AM, there was a terrible hit-and-run accident at Jefferson and Hoover on the USC campus. Nineteen-year-old freshman Adriana Bacan and Marcus Golfunk were crossing Hoover when a black Toyota or Honda hit both of them. The car was speeding and had run a red light as it was driving east on Jefferson. Adriana was thrown from the hood of the car and subsequently died. Marcus remained on the hood of the car as the driver drove on for five hundred feet, stopped, and the passenger in the car dumped Marcus on the side of the road and left the scene of the accident. Adriana, a beautiful honors student, died of her injuries. Behind me are several of her, excuse me, several of her sorority sisters from Pi Phi Phi. Kelly is here, the president, she will speak after me. I am here to speak because when I was in high school in nineteen sixty-nine, my best friend, Peter Schaub, died in Houston, in Brandeis University. And, and I think of Peter every day, and it's forty years later, and, and his hit-and-run accident is an outrage, and I am calling on the city council to offer reward, a substantial reward. You made, you were able to find three million dollars to give to a firefighter who ate dog food. You could, you could find fifty or a hundred thousand dollars to apprehend these two criminals who fled the scene, to give some comfort to, to the sorority sisters behind me and to the family, the mother and the grandmother of Adriana. I know you all saw them on TV. I would encourage all UCLA and USC students to email their congressmen, I mean, their councilmen. You can go to lacity.org to find their email addresses. I got ahold of Kelly because I, I went on the website, and she texted me this morning. I left the police commission to come over here, and, uh, as you know, there were over two hundred and ten deaths in LA and five thousand ninety-five pedestrian-involved accidents in LA County. Tomorrow, we hope to have even more people here, fraternity members from, uh, just, from Marcus's fraternity. Thank you very much. I'm Melrose Larry Green.
Thank you very much. Uh, Kelly, would you like to come next? Good morning, and thank you for coming.
Hi, um, my name's Kelly Wirt, and I was Adriana's, um, the president of Adriana's sorority. And, um, I found out Sunday morning that Adriana was killed in a car accident, and obviously, her death saddened our whole sorority, and, um, it would just mean a lot, any help that you guys can give to finding her, her killer, because all of her friends, her family are so sad, and, you know, she died at such a young age, and anything we can do to, you know, help, help us a little bit, make it a little bit easier to go through this, would be greatly appreciated. Um, because Adriana was an amazing girl and an outstanding member of our sorority. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly, and just so you know also, the, the way we do reward motions, as soon as the police department asks for any help, if they don't have leads, I can guarantee it would pass here unanimously, so we're working very closely with the police department. Mr. Parks, uh, who represents that area, maybe we'd like to say--
Thank you, Mr. President.
--put our sympathies with you.
As you speak, we're writing up a motion to recommend to the council for seventy-five-thousand-dollar reward for the capture of the suspects involved with the homicide death and also the injuries to the young man.
Thank you very much, our deepest sympathies. Cliff Schumacher is our next speaker. After that will be Daniel Wright. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you. Um, yeah, it's a very, very sad thing, and, you know, to, but, and what I'm here today to talk about a little bit is about what's going on in the film community. As you know, there's been some runaway production happening here in Los Angeles, and there are some new proposals that I think have been brought to your attention about changing some of the city of LA film permit requirements, um, whereas you, you wanted to have a little bit more notification, you know, a little more time to, um, file the permits, notify the public, and also give, um, you know, and also provide a, a way to, you know, get the postings up so we can do the filming. One of the things that, um, I've noticed over the past couple of years is that we, we have fewer commercials coming into town. One of the things that's happening with commercials, that obviously it's generated by our economy, fewer, fewer companies are spending money, the budget's becoming less and less, and so they're giving us fewer days to get these projects, um, up and running and going. So I believe that the system that we have right now for filming in, in Los Angeles is working and is a viable system, and probably does not need to be changed. One other thing that's been brought, that's been up is for discussion is whether or not to use on-duty LAPD officers for the filming versus the retired, uh, police officers. One thing that I do know is that film production is a fairly boring event. You go in and, you know, these people are there, they're, they're there to kind of protect the public and help us get the filming, but for the most part, they're there protecting the public, making sure that we're not violating our permits. But you'll find that it is a very lazy, sort of slow process of, of, uh, of a day. And I believe, in my opinion, that, um, the LAPD officers that are on duty would be, be better served, um, trying to, um, enforce public safety and protecting the public against crimes and, you know, speeding, things like that, and allowing the off-duty police officers to continue, uh, well, not off-duty, but actually have the retired police officers continue to work with us.
Thank you, Mr. Schumacher. I think, uh, Mr. Rose and all, the chair of our Public Works Committee wanted to briefly respond.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just on both points, um, when it comes to retired officers, we're having an update on that at the Public Works Committee meeting tomorrow, uh, April first, and, and also the second issue you raised, which has to do with the RFP, of which Film LA is one of the players in that. We are taking that back to committee, and we're gonna make a final recommendation back to council on the fifteenth of, of this month, so we'll be in committee then. Between now and the fifteenth, we urge anyone who has an interest in the RFP and that whole issue to be in contact with me and Laura McClellan in my office, so that we can work out any issues, so we can have an RFP that everybody likes. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Uh, Daniel Wright is our next speaker. After that is John Walsh. Good morning.
Good morning, council. Daniel Wright, on behalf of the Friends of the Southwest Museum. Council members, last Tuesday, I distributed to you copies of an October two thousand and seven email exchange between LACC D staff and John Gray, CEO of the Autry. Today, I distributed to you one page of those same emails. It is from John Gray to Gary Columbo, Dean of Institutional Advancement at LACC D. I want to read Mr. Gray's email to you, because it shows that, uh, his two thousand and seven obsession with creating the public impression of an LACC D partnership, and it shows that Gray is aware of major donors who are interested in donating to the Southwest Museum, but that, who he wants to direct the money to the LACC D instead of accepting the money on behalf of the Autry to pay for the renovation of the building. And this is his email. "Gary, how are we coming? After our press announcement with the mayor last month, we had great positive responses from the members of the community. However, the opposition to any change in Mount Washington has mounted a real campaign to frighten the community. They have said that the Autry will sell the site after the collection is moved, that the Autry has no intention of operating the site, and of course, this rumor has taken on a real life of its own. It's been hard for us to counter their rumors with our current plan. In order for us to stop this kind of attack, which hurts us at every level, why not announce that the LACC D and the Autry are working together on the formation of the Southwest Academy? We already have a signed letter, which they do not. We agree in spirit. We have already given funds to the time and project. Why not make it public? If Mark," that's Mark Drummond, chancellor of LACC D, "the mayor, Councilman Weezer, could all make the announcement, it would help us move forward. The specific work would continue, but it would help us stop a rumor that is just out of hand. We certainly can help you meet with key donors that we know are interested. Signed, John Gray." So he's willing to give the big money to LACC D to convert the Southwest Museum, but not fix it as a responsible trustee. Please pay attention to this issue, council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. John Walsh is our next speaker, and then we'll go to San Pedro for Peter Birmaster.
I've been here since Halloween. I'm sure you don't miss me. Uh, countdown to the raise in the sales tax, thirteen hours, twenty-eight minutes, twelve, twenty-two seconds, nineteen seconds, eighteen seconds. We'd like to invite you, we're going to hold a two-hour countdown to the rise, the outrageous rise in our sales tax. We will be holding it tonight at ten PM at the All Night Newsstand on Coenga Boulevard. The Arnold, uh, Arnold Schwarzenegger look-alike will be there. We will buy something one minute before, we will buy the same thing one minute after. We will buy many things with Arnold's face on them, and we'll dump them, because this is like the Boston Tea Party. We want to have hundreds and thousands of people to send the message that we're gonna vote against Prop one A, which is an extension of this outrageous sales tax that harms the poor people. That's the countdown tonight. Join us all. It is, we're gonna have a lot of media there, we're gonna have Arnold Schwarzenegger there, and, and midnight, we will become in LA the first person to actually pay the sales tax at one second after midnight. Our group is called Druid, Democrats, Republicans United in Defeating Prop one A. When is that? Ten o'clock. When? Tonight, Tuesday night. And when does the tax start? On Wednesday morning. I'd just like to finish by saying that, uh, I won't show you the pictures here, because I think they're obscene. Uh, I was almost arrested for obscenity at the LA Times, uh, I mean, at the, at, at the city, at the, uh, uh, mayor's, uh, office, or at the MTA. What I just showed you is a picture of the mayor with fourteen naked breasts, two naked buttocks, and a shaved vagina from Playboy magazine. There is a blackout on this story in LA Times and the Daily News, although I gave a copy to Ms. Reston at MTA in front of the, uh, LA Times and in front of the mayor. Thank you. Believe me, I'll see you in Mal, Halloween, tonight, ten o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Uh, Peter Birmaster is our next speaker in San Pedro.
Good morning, councilman.
Good morning.
My name is Pete Birmaster, and I'm retired since nineteen hundred ninety-eight. I was a former Canai trainer, and, and twenty-two years ago, I acquired a piece of land from the Department of Water and Power, and it was a brushers and a wilderness. We fixed it into a nice green space where the Canai, uh, officers can, uh, train their dogs and relieve them of dirty and exercise them. We also have a social group there, and all of a sudden, the Department of Water and Power, we came under the radar, and all of a sudden, they want to charge us thousand dollars a month. It is a community interest. We are not a company, we are a social group, and we help in the community. I'm a council member in San Pedro also. We do a lot of volunteer work, and it's unjust, unfair to charge us thousand dollars. We should stay exempt. We had a permit prior for the Department of Water and Power to stay there, and it costs us money to, uh, maintain, maintenance, and landscape the property too. So we do this in public interest. We have the support of all communities, neighborhood councils in our area, and from the police Canai units. We are not a company, we are a social, therapeutic group, helping the youths out of this, and we need your help and appreciate that you take notice of it. Either it's unjust for the Department of Water and Power and to charge us. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, sir. That will close our general public comment for today. If we can take up the commissioners first.
Item fourteen is the reappointment of Ms. Chrissy Castro to the Native American Indian Commission.
And I'm with you, Art Parks.
That was actually waived at a--
Waived at, okay, but I'd like to recognize, uh, Mr. Labange, and ask Ms. Castro to come forward to the table. She's here.
At this time, I don't see Ms. Castro right now.
Do you want to hold it and wait?
Yeah, hold it.
Okay. Um, and then number fifteen.
I can ask the clerk to, uh, check the file. I'll come right over.
Okay. Is Ms. Friedman here? Why don't you come forward to the table, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Wesson, the chair of our Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee, um, for Ms. Friedman's reappointment to the relocation appeals board. Mr. Wesson?
Good to see you again. Uh, Mr. President and members, uh, we, uh, you, rarely you have an opportunity to, uh, you know, buy a product that you already know how it can deliver, and I say, in, in this case, we've got an individual that will need no on-the-job training, a person that's committed to the great city of Los Angeles, and I would, uh, hope that colleagues, you would join me in supporting the mayor's appointment. And now, if you could just say a few things about yourself.
Thank you very much, Councilman Wesson. Thank you, council members. Um, it's my pleasure again to be reappointed. I was just here a month ago. My appointment actually ends in two days, and this will be a reappointment for the next two years. Uh, Mr. Wesson knows that I was on the Relocations Appeals Board for nine years previously, and my commitment to the city of Los Angeles is strong, because I am a native Angelino that is very few of us around. Anyway, thank you very much for your consideration, I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Gruehl is our next speaker.
Thank you, and I, I just want to add, uh, my kudos to Ms. Friedman, who's been a extraordinary activist on a number of issues, um, and, uh, worked with me on some projects in my district, and is an individual that, um, not only has done a great job, but will in the future for the next two years, and appreciate her insight and her commitment to, to serving on this board, and, uh, we, we just, I just wanted to say thank you very much for your willingness to serve. So, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruehl. Any other members wish to be heard on the reappointment? Not, thank you, Ms. Friedman, for putting yourself forward, and, uh, we do have, uh, on item fifteen, the cards in the public. And, Mr. Dog, your comments for the council on this appointment.
Yes, thank you. My congratulations and kudos and happiness and cheerful good wishes for this appointment. La di da di da. Just wanted to see what it felt like to be a council member for a second, but now, let's get back to Zuma Dog, bamboozle buster, shining light on political shadiness, and this is no besmirch to Ms. Friedman, who I'm sure is very qualified and very perfect for this position. However, Mayor Antonio Vieragosa, he has a little problem, the fact that he uses commissioner appointments as a vindictive payback to push people out of electorate races, let's say, uh, Richard Alacon's district, for example. Cindy Montanez has given you a big run for the money, and you're about to lose and be out in the streets politically. So, hey, the mayor, hey, Cindy, will give you a nice commissioner appointment, drop out of the race. Capiche? Or like, uh, the mayor's cousin, John Perez, was running for Assembly, my good friend Gustavo, uh, was running, who I feel was a much better candidate. Hey, drop out. Capiche? Well, he got a commissioner appointment. So the point is, when you use commissioner appointments for, for patronage paybacks, oh, hey, you helped fund this project, hey, you'll be a commissioner. When you do it for patronage paybacks, when you do it for vindictive, political, push-around, bully-thug tactics, well, it taints the entire commissioner pool. So as I look at this commissioner, I say, gee, I wonder if she's one of the good people who's trying to do good in this city, or just one of these fake, shill, payback commissioner appointments. We lose experience, we lose productivity. You got people working all over these departments and commissioners that don't know a thing about the department, because they don't know a thing about the topic, because the only reason they're in that position is because they dropped out of a race, or because they did a favor for the mayor. So I don't know if I can support Ms. Friedman really, or be happy. So I don't know if I can support Ms. Friedman really, or be happy. She looks like a decent person, and I feel like being in a warm and fuzzy good mood. So let's just say, we hope she doesn't screw the city like the rest of his commissioner appointments.
That will close our public comment on the reappointment. And with that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Congratulations on your reappointment, and thank you so much again for putting yourself forward. If we can take the next, or first item called special, please.
Item four called special for Cards.
All right. On item number four is before us, we have Kent Smith is our first speaker, and after that is Mark Chaff. Good morning.
Good morning, council members. My name is Kent Smith. I'm the Executive Director of the LA Fashion District. As all of you probably know, we've had a long and arduous renewal process, but we're delighted to report that we now have petitions from property owners representing over fifty percent of the assessment to add sixteen blocks to our district. We've received signatures from our largest property owner, who will pay over $79,000, and from our smallest property owner, who will pay $38. We will now encompass ninety-eight blocks and over sixteen hundred parcels and represent eight hundred and seventy-six owners. I have the current Chair of our Board, Mark Chaff, and our former Chair, John Vandennaker, who do not need to speak this morning. Our strong partnership with the city of Los Angeles is one of the major reasons that owners have agreed to spend $3.9 million annually to keep the district clean and safe. The key to the success of the district is this Clean and Safe program, which supports sixty-six thousand jobs. Board of Works President Cynthia Ruiz and council members Jan Perry and Jose Wezar and their staff have worked tirelessly to keep the door of City Hall open in support of our renewal. We also owe a huge debt of gratitude to the City Clerk's Office for their patience and their expertise in navigating this challenging renewal effort. We urge you to approve the renewal of the district. Most importantly, when we get that approval, hopefully tomorrow, we'll be hiring fourteen more people for our Clean and Safe program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mark Chaff is our next speaker, and after that is John Vandennaker.
Mark Chaff, Chairman of the Fashion District, no need to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. John Vandennaker.
I don't need to speak. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. That will be our last speaker then, for item number four. Anybody from the council wishing to be heard? No, let's go ahead and prepare the roll.
Mr. President, there is no action required today.
It is just tomorrow is the tabulation.
To close the public hearing today and the ballot tabulation.
There's no objection, then we'll continue that till tomorrow. Next item, please.
Item five was being held on the desk.
Okay, that's going to be referred to Public Works then, without objection. Item six, please.
Item six called special by Councilmember Hahn.
All right, Ms. Hahn. Item number six is before us.
Thank you, colleagues. This is about launching a study to expand the current CRA project area in Wilmington. So, who's here? Baron, are you here? Could you come forward, please?
Megan Hunter with him.
Okay. And you have with you?
My name is Megan Hunter. I'm the City Planner with the CRA.
Okay. So what we're doing basically is launching a two-year study. Is that correct? That it's going to cost us some money to basically explore the feasibility of expanding the project area. Can you tell me a little bit about what's, how does this work? What's the first step? What's the process? And what should happen at the end of two years? Hold my time, please.
Yes, good morning. My name is Baron McLean.
Hold my time.
Hey, Tom. I'm the Regional Administrator for the LA Harbor Region with CRA. Yes, the initial steps of the plan amendment process would be to examine the proposed expansion area physically as well as economically to determine if blight exists. Part of that process would include a formation of a community advisory committee that would work with CRA staff. Ultimately, that committee would help guide and the preparation of the report to the City Council. That would, in a two-year window, come back before the City Council to determine if that committee, one, has agreed with staff's analysis that blight exists, and then also, part of that discussion would be whether or not that committee recommends to the City Council.
So, okay, so basically, you set up another advise, a community advisor committee, because we already have one for the current industrial park.
That is true. Staff is proposing that this expanded area have a separate and distinct community advisory committee to work with staff through this process.
And what would be their relationship with you during this two years?
It is my intent that the relationship, we would be, in fact, partners. Staff would obviously be the technical support. There would be a series of workshops, including educational workshops, to determine what is blight, what's a project area, what we can do legally, what we can't do legally, and ultimately, again, culminate in the advisory committee determining whether they want that territory to be within a redevelopment project area.
Because some of the concerns I think we've had in the past have been from community members who kind of feel like, you know, the CRA relationship is not as good as it could be, communication seems to be sometimes on the short end, coming from the CRA to the community. There seems to be a feeling that the community doesn't have a real vehicle or voice, even though there is a setup of an advisory committee right now. There's just, let me be blunt. CRA sort of has a bad track record in Wilmington. Tell me how this would address that, or improve that, or, you know, what's going to be different? And how can I justify the case of including all of Wilmington in this study? What's your reasoning?
What's going to be different, in fact, is we are going to initiate a public outreach campaign. It is the intent of CRA to have the community advocate for the redevelopment project area. It is to have the community work, as I said before, in partnership with us to tell us what some of the challenges they believe exist, and staff would then articulate what we think we could do as a redevelopment agency to assist in overcoming those challenges.
And why all of Wilmington?
Right now, we're proposing to study all of Wilmington. And the reason why is because we've learned that in the past, when the project area is narrowly defined, there isn't enough resources to overcome a lot of the challenges that the community wants us to take a look at.
Tell me how CRA works with the Planning Department and the upcoming community plan. How are you guys going to work together?
We work in partnership. As we are currently in San Pedro, as the Planning Department is doing the community plan update, we schedule regular meetings, we let them know what our concerns are, they let us know what their concerns are, and we pretty much work as a team to determine how things should move forward. We're proposing something similar for Wilmington.
Let me ask this, again, some of the other concerns, and I have them too, frankly, you know, sort of like, what do you have to say for yourself in thirty-five years in the project area in Wilmington? What's the track record? What has been accomplished? Why should the community and me sort of support this expanded project area when a lot of folks feel like nothing significant has been done in thirty-five years?
There is a lot of significant improvements that CRA has done within the existing Wilmington redevelopment project area. We have worked with the city family to take back the public right of way, which, as you know, that the private property owners had pretty much taken and used at will. We've worked with, again, the city family to eliminate some of the blighted concerns. We've assembled land, we've sold for expansion of, for example, Oneida's Foods. We're currently working with East Street Coal, in which we're proposing to sell down Block Twenty-Seven. Part of the primary challenges that you've got in Wilmington is that you've got a lot of different ownerships, small parcels, with a lot of toxic remediation. And frankly, the project area just simply doesn't generate enough tax increment to alleviate those greater concerns. So what we're doing--
I mean, there would be people that would say, a significant amount of blight has not been alleviated in the current project area.
And they would be right.
So, they would say, why, why should we give you more?
Because it's simply a matter of resources. With an expanded project area, if it's amended, we could use resources to alleviate some of the existing challenges you've got in Wilmington.
So you basically, you basically think if you expand the project area, you'll be able to get tax increments that could go back into--
Into the existing project area. That's one reason. But we also recognize that, in order, as you drive into the redevelopment project area, this blight exists. So there is some challenges, and businesses want to relocate into the project area. So we're looking at cleaning up those incompatible uses, cleaning up the commercial corridors, and taking advantage of the great infrastructure that does exist.
How does County Los Angeles feel about us undertaking this study?
This is the beginning process. We have not had a dialogue with the county yet. This is, again, per the Oversight Ordinance coming before you, to request that we take a look to examine the proposed expansion area.
Okay, well, I know we have a couple of public speakers, I think, on this, on this item. I do know that the Neighborhood Council, I believe, passed a resolution in support of this study, although I understand there was a lot of concerns and issues, many of which I think I've touched on today. I mean, there's just a feeling that, you know, there's a lot of this hodgepodge property out there, and it's been, it hasn't been CRA's forte in the last thirty-five years to actually cobble together real parcels that, you know, were able to translate into businesses and jobs, and actually alleviating a lot of the blight in Wilmington. What you're telling me is, you need this next two-year study to maybe look at those issues and see if an expansion is the right way to go.
Yes, that's exactly it.
Okay, well, my, and again, we have somebody come up, but I will tell you that my biggest issue with this is certainly community input, and finding a way for the community, the real stakeholders in this, to have a way to have input and to help shape your study, your outcome, your results, and ultimately, the direction that you want to have in the community of Wilmington.
Thank you. It is my objective to have the redevelopment plan include the objectives that the community wants. It's not staff's redevelopment plan. Ultimately, it would be the community's redevelopment plan.
Okay, we like hearing that. Okay.
Okay. Any other members wishing to be heard on this? Okay. Is there any move to reopen the public hearing?
Move to open it?
We've already had a public hearing, so yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay, would you all mind if we reopened the public hearing? How many speakers are there?
There's two cards. There's Ms. Cecilia Moreno and Zuma Dogg.
Okay. Five minutes, colleagues?
Or two minutes per speaker.
Two minutes per speaker. I see no objection.
Thank you very much. Cecilia Moreno will be our first speaker. She'll be followed by Zuma Dogg. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Cecilia Moreno, and I am the Chair of the Wilmington Neighborhood Council, proudly the first certified neighborhood council of the city of LA. On Wednesday, March twenty-fifth, the Neighborhood Council voted to support the CRA's action to study expanding the CRA's coverage area in Wilmington. I would just like to express the Neighborhood Council's hesitation about what will be finally approved. We are concerned with the role and voice the Neighborhood Council and the stakeholders of Wilmington will play. Also, we don't want the current CRA area to suffer during this study time. We understand and expect the coverage area will not be amended and expanded without the full support of the community. We believe it is vital to engage the community in this study, and that no approval for any expansion without the full involvement and support of our community be granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moreno. Zuma Dogg is our next speaker.
Yes, and I'd like to thank Councilmember Janice Hahn for reopening public comments, so I could weigh in on this issue. I bet if she knew it was just me and that one other person, she probably would have reopened it. But anytime the CRA is up for discussion, I'm here to say, we should be dissolving the CRA. Community robbing a-holes. I am here to say, the city is in deep, deep, deep financial doo-doo. Why? Because of the CRA. First of all, I'd like to remind people, the CRA is for redeveloping blight. It's for blight. Under the worst circumstances, when emergency circumstances need to be taken, then we'll come in and help it. But what happens? They give the money to Eli Broad, the Related Company, the Arab Emirates of Dubai, hey, let's build a Grand Avenue Project Park. So what happens? They suck all the CRA money from all across the city, all across the county, and put it right into this roll of the dice loser project, Grand Avenue Project. By the way, you should be collecting the quarter-million-dollar late fees. The project's never going to get going. Meanwhile, there's no money for anything else. I'd like to say, the CRA also invested into Murillo Maddox Investment Properties. So I'm here to say, the CRA's in big trouble. In case you don't read Zoom at times, because I'm the only one covering it locally, Murillo Maddox is going bankrupt. That's right, the owner. I'm here to tell you, it's going to be an Enron scandal. It's going to look like Bernie Madoff, like Maddox. So the CRA is going to be in deep doo-doo, because all that money has sunk into Murillo Maddox, it's going down the toilet. So let's be clear. If there's some blight in the community, then we can have the CRA. But let's stop this nonsense of taking all the county and city money and rolling the dice in these speculative crap projects. Hey, do you think there's going to be any economy to, to, to help support these projects? You're fooling yourself, clowns. Don't do this study. Just do it.
Mr. Dogg, that'll be your last warning. You know that the policy is here to call the entire council clowns. You can express your opinions, but unduly, and I'll restate the policy that's up there, loud, threatening, personal, abusive language prohibited. That is your last warning. Nope, there's no response. Thank you. That will close our public comment. Thank you, Ms. Hahn, for reopening the public comment. Anything else you'd like to--
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we really take what Ms. Moreno said with making sure that the whole community has approval of this, and particularly, the Neighborhood Council. And we'll make sure that the Neighborhood Council gets involved in the advisory committee, so that-- Baron, are you listening to me? Yeah. Yeah, this is a key point. This is a key point, that, you know, during the study and before we move forward with any recommendations, that the Neighborhood Council has been able to weigh in on the direction that they want. And we either get them involved in the advisory committee, or we figure out a way to have the Neighborhood Council obviously weigh in on this.
Yes, and that was conveyed to the Neighborhood Council when I made my presentation to them last week. She already has no intent of moving forward with the plan amendment without the community support.
Okay, so would there be something that would be, would go to the full Neighborhood Council before your recommendation was--
We will, we will work with the council office to determine whether it would be one group that's comprised inclusive of the Neighborhood Council, or if we will work with two separate groups, Neighborhood Council and a separate community advisory committee.
Okay, thank you. Okay, no further comments, and I would suggest that we approve this two-year study.
Thank you. All right, with that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. No objection. We'll sum that forthwith. Next item, please.
Item seventeen called special for Cards.
Item number seventeen. Mr. Dogg, if you'd like to come forward on seventeen. You have one minute left. Item seventeen, sir, you have a minute. All right, that closed public hearing, and please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item eighteen called special for Cards.
Mr. Dogg, item eighteen. Man John Walsh will follow.
Yes, this is the one I wanted to speak on, and if I could just clarify, if there's an attorney that could represent me, because you're allowed to say clown, and I'm being warned and threatened to lose my time, that's a First Amendment violation worth suing over. But this one is about the Jobs Growth and Tax Reform Committee and the Annual Planning Report for Business Improvement. So briefly, first of all, let me say, there is not enough water to hydrate your projects. You're doing density all over, you've got more track maps. I'm here to tell you, people, not enough water to hydrate the projects. And unless you want the seniors dropping dead on the streets because they don't have water, you cut back on the density. Secondly, we don't have enough infrastructure, not enough side streets, not enough highways, not enough anything. So don't build more density in your plans. It's over. Murillo Maddox is bankrupt, the city is bankrupt, there's no tax growth. Pull the plug on all this nonsense. You have tanked the city--
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Walsh.
This concerns the Westchester BID. Well, the Westchester BID better realize, they have eleven minutes and fifty-seven, eleven hours and fifty-seven minutes before the state tax, sales tax, goes up by one percent. That's why they're going to be out there with, at Coenga and Hollywood Boulevard tonight with the Arnold look-alike and myself. Incidentally, just in Hollywood, you know, in your district, in front of the, of the, there is a huge store that just recently went out of business. It went out of business, the Bellwood Restaurant, six months in arrears. It went out of business right next to the theater that is showing rent, right next to the pant, right next to the theater because of terrible business. And you're going to add one percent business sales tax. Just taking my one minute. Thank you.
Thank you. That will close our public comment on the Business Improvement District in Westchester. Please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item twenty-two called special for cards.
Okay, Mr. Dog reached the limit, but will put his card in, and John Walsh on item twenty-two.
These are special events, $35,000 in special event money. You know, I complained about this the six times I was here last year, and in fact, you put a cap on it. If you think we're just getting up here and playing with ourselves, we're not, because I had one issue last year, and that was to get these special events money lowered with a new cap, and there is a new cap. We're not here to fool around. In fact, although there's $35,000 in here, including $7,299 for Parks and La Bange's St. Vincent Catholic School Fiesta, there's no money for the item M, the L.A. Weekly Detour. In other words, the L.A. Weekly did a hard-hitting story on you, and now you're not, you cut their money off. If it's, if it's a Catholic school event with little kids, they get the money. If it's a huge, a big shot politician, or rather, a contributor, they get the money, but nothing for the L.A. Weekly. Long live the L.A. Weekly. Thank you.
All right, that will close public hearing. Any members wishing to be heard? Not? Let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item twenty-four called special for cards.
Okay. Our card also is Zuma Dog and Mr. Walsh on item twenty-four. Mr. Walsh on item twenty-four?
This is the water issue. Mr. Parks, we need a lot of water. As you know, there's a racist attack on Mr. Parks by the Ethics Commission, which he has had to go to court to fight. I'm 100% in favor of you. Does a court battle. However, when the mayor, his two campaign contributors at Travel Traders are under criminal indictment, and they got away with it in five years. I'd like to say that I support your water. I support you. You're a good man, and I, whenever I see racism, I always stand behind my number-one person. For me...
Mr. President, he's nowhere near deciding.
I am speaking on water.
It's World Water Day.
Hey, Mr. Parks.
Sir, apologies, but if you could speak to World Water Day, the special event. Thank you.
Okay, let me say that as far as water is concerned, water and sales tax don't mix. How is that?
Thank you.
The tax goes up in about one hour and about 58 more minutes, but...
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. That'll close public comment on twenty-four. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item twenty-six called special for cards.
That was just one card also from Mr. Dog who reached his limit, so let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item twenty-eight called special for cards.
Dr. Clyde Williams is our first speaker on item twenty-eight.
So fast. Clyde Williams, 40115 Barrett Road, El Sereno. Grant funds for transit-oriented development. As in item six, we also don't trust the CRA, and we do trust our neighborhood councils a lot more than the CRA. In this particular one, the neighborhood councils for certain transit-oriented developments have opposed such developments, but their time was extended so that they might be able to access some of these funds. El Sereno has had to deal with Caltrans, a transit-oriented development, for over 20 years as our slim lords. We need something to move these properties, such as grant money, back to owner occupants and to the tax rolls. Unlike Highland Park, where the transit-oriented development has been trying to get the community to accept it, much against their position, we would like to have it in El Sereno. We would like to get the grant funds to replace Caltrans in El Sereno, on Huntington, and on Valley and Al Hamra. The criteria for grant funds should include participation of the neighborhood councils in all of the development coordination and in the approval of these projects, much like we would hope that CRA would eventually come to the same point. Thank you.
Thank you. Percy Vaz is our next speaker. After that will be Lee Millman.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. My name is Percy Vaz. I'm president and owner of Amcal Multi Housing, Inc. We are affordable housing developers throughout the city in many of your council districts. I'm here to speak in support of the CRA and the LHD's recommendation to you and council member Herb Wesson's motion to take advantage of the recently passed stimulus program and use it to recapture some of the funds that were lost to the state by passing this motion.
It leverages your dollar five to one, so you get, for every $1 invested, you get $5 from the state. Some of the projects are scoring maximum points and therefore are assured of winning the allocation. You also leverage almost 30 times the total project cost with the amount of stimulus funds being spent. Most of these projects are shovel-ready and ready to go. We think we could get them, start construction on them as early as September, within 30 days of winning the TAC allocation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vaz. Lee Millman is our next speaker. After that is John Walsh.
Good morning. Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Lee Millman. I'm the director of housing at a community of friends, a long-term developer of affordable housing in the city and county of L.A. I'm speaking in favor of the motion. The city has wisely always used its funds for affordable housing to leverage other sources of funding from federal and state levels. This motion would continue the long-term city policy of maximizing its resources through leverage by utilizing federal stimulus funds through the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act to lend to projects that are applying for Prop 1(c), TOD, and infill grants, and which will receive points for inclusion of these stimulus funds. The leveraging, as this previous speaker said, is 1 to 5. The benefit to the city, over 300 units of housing, which will create jobs at a multiplier of 1 to 1.3, and projects which are shovel-ready, which will provide housing and create jobs. Our particular project will create 70 units of housing in the Hollywood area for formerly homeless individuals and families. I urge you to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John Walsh is our next speaker.
11:10 a.m., Tuesday, 3:31, 12 hours, 50 minutes until tea day, a half-cent sales tax. Transit-oriented development, what a joke this is. McCormick Baron was supposed to have already built around the MacArthur Park Station. That's dead. They're going to have affordable housing at the Hollywood and Highland Station. Now I understand from the New York Times, the condos are going for $8 million. $8 million for a condo. Let me tell you what, the subway, that was supposed to have 298,000 boardings weekday by the year 2000, they're at about 150 now, 50% lower. And who takes the subway? People like me. Isn't that a shame? Working-class people take the subway. People who look like you up here don't take the subway. I'm telling you right now that there is a perfect storm of economic drought and disaster. And what is the mayor doing? He's appearing on page 115 of the March issue of Playboy magazine, and when I shouted to him, he tried to have me arrested. When I resisted arrest, he pulled back because there was a camera there. And the only reason, let me tell you, the only reason I'm not being beaten up and arrested now is because you're watching me. In countries where people don't watch, and where there is no camera, people like me are killed and our families are killed. And everybody knows that's exactly what's happening. Here is a censored version of it. If you want, if you're angry about what's happening tonight, Hollywood and Highland, 10 o'clock, beyond the media, we're going to, Arnold Schwarzenegger will be there, and we will be there.
Mr. President, Mr. Walsh again is off topic.
Of the relevancy police, the relevancy police.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. That will close our public comment on this item. If we can please prepare the roll.
Mr. President, the Housing Department did submit a report, and there is a recommendation within that report.
Okay, let's go. What is that recommendation, if you'd like to?
The recommendation is that the Housing Department general manager and the CRA executive officer be authorized to issue letters of intent for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and CRA agency-sponsored projects identified below and in the attachment.
Okay, Mr. Wesson moves the report. I'll second that. Accepted without objection is friendly. Let's go ahead and open the roll. I'm going to report, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, Mr. Labange on 14. Did you want to continue that, or do you want to?
I think I should. I saw our city clerk, and our city clerk said they did email the representative. I would like to give an opportunity to come so we can hold that over.
Okay, we'll hold that over for a day until April 1st. Thank you, and that will take us to special one. Mr. City Attorney on the findings, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the LAPD has requested council issue a reward for information leading to the arrest of suspects responsible for the death of Adriana Bakhan and serious injury to Marcus Garfunkel while crossing at Jefferson and Hoover at approximately 3 a.m., March 29th, 2009. Immediate action is required to approve the urgency findings and place the item on a continuation agenda so that more information could be shared at tomorrow's meeting in order to increase the likelihood that the reward offer will help the LAPD arrest a suspect as soon as possible.
Okay, on the findings, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. On the substance, Mr. Parks on the substance?
I appreciate that. We just...
That's just before us now.
To have this for tomorrow because we did have the officers, hopefully, from South Traffic that could come in and give us a more in-depth update of their investigation.
Great, okay. We'll continue that for one day till the 1st of April without objection. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Garcia requests to be excused Friday, June 5th to leave at 11:30 for city business. That meets council policy.
All right, reluctantly, we'll excuse him.
Councilmember Alacon requests to be excused April 14th and 15th for city business. A motion is required for the 15th.
Takes us down to 11?
10.
10. All right, let's hold that on the desk, Mr. Alacon. We'll work with you, make sure we stay strong on quorum there for that day. Let's hold that on the desk till tomorrow.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused July 28th, 31st, and August 4th for city business. That meets council policy.
Okay, that excuse is granted.
And Councilmember Perry requests to be excused April 28th to arrive at 11 a.m. for city business. That meets council policy.
Okay, that excuse is granted to you.
That clears the desk.
All right, quick announcements, colleagues. Yesterday was Janice Hahn's birthday, if I'm not mistaken, and we wish her a very, very happy birthday. Hope you had a good celebration. And today is Tony Cardenas' birthday, so we wish him a very happy birthday, and we hope that you'll be celebrating it throughout the day, Mr. Cardenas. On behalf of the entire city, happy birthday to you. If anybody wants to sing, you know, they can go ahead and do it, but...
I think every day is a blessing, and to Mr. Cardenas, happy birthday, and to you and your family, and to Janice, to you and your family, happy birthday. I'm sorry, I didn't get that phone call in, as I'm sure everybody else got it, and you got it.
All righty. Thank you. Any other announcements, colleagues? Do we have any adjourning motions today? If I could ask everybody, please, in council chambers to rise for our adjourning motions. Thank you. And Mr. Labange?
Ms. Hahn.
No, sorry, Ms. Hahn.
Oh, thank you, colleagues. I'd like to adjourn in memory of...
If I could ask everybody to rise just for our adjourning motions, for those who have passed. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Go ahead, Ms. Hahn.
Drago Bozic, who was born in 1934 in Croatia, and he passed away on March 22nd of natural causes. He was the grandfather of Anna Dragin, who works in my office. He was the beloved husband to Anka Bozic and the dear father of Zelko Bozic, and was also the grandfather of Nina Zanki and the great-grandfather of Niko Dragin, Anna's little son. He left home at a very young age and moved to Zagreb, Croatia, where he spent the remainder of his life. He loved working on his weekend house. He was a sports fan. He loved spending time with his family, and his granddaughters were the loves of his life, and he waited anxiously each year for their visit from America. And Anna told me she was there last year, and really, she said she felt a sense when she hugged him goodbye, that she wasn't sure if they would be together again. So at least she kind of had that moment with her grandfather. But it's always hard to lose a dear grandfather, and we, our sympathies go out to the entire family.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Members, I ask for you adjourn in memory of Patrick Blimeyer, who was a great gaffer in the film industry, very colorful career. He also traveled the world and loved many, 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 many things, including his family, survived by his wife Ginger, his children Laurie, Tanya, Yochi, Tim, and Kim. I ask for you adjourn in memory of Patrick Blimeyer. Also, members, I ask for you adjourn in memory of Vincent Heng. Vincent Heng is a fellow I grew up with, went to Ivanhoe Elementary School, King, John Marshall High School. He went to USC and graduated with a master's in biology, later became a dentist, was involved in Chinatown, is the Chinatown Chamber of Commerce, a very inspirational guy and very fun person. Tragically, he suffered a heart attack just the other day and was passed. He survived by his wife Cheryl, daughter Christian, and brother Richard Heng. I ask for you adjourn in memory of Vincent Heng. And I'm sad too because he was such a wonderful fellow who I grew up with. Hadn't seen him as much over the years, occasionally in Chinatown or his family insurance business on Sunset Boulevard, but every day is absolute blessing. Finally, I'd like Miss Grill to join with me in adjourn in memory of Monty Hale, the great cowboy, singing cowboy, best friend of Gene Autry. He died of a variety of age-related causes at his home at 89 years old. He lived a wonderful life in Studio City. Monty Hale came out from Texas, hitchhiked out to California when someone said he'd be good in movies, got a seven-year contract with Republic Pictures, and it's went there through the time he met Gene and had such a strong bond and friendship. Later years, together having breakfast in Palm Springs, California, and discussing the future of Gene Autry and his vision for a Western Heritage Museum. His wife Joanne, who's a great businesswoman, was selected by Gene Autry and his wife Jackie to be the first executive director and president of what is now the Autry National Center of the American West. He was a wonderful man, and he always had a great big smile and that big Texas handshake, and he loved to be a greeter out at the Autry. His wife, Joanne, survived 31 years of marriage, and his brother Dick Hale. I ask for you adjourn in memory of Monty Hale.
Ms. Grill?
And thank you, Tom. What a wonderful tribute, and I think that Gene Autry and Monty Hale are up there in heaven singing some old cowboy songs. And Monty Hale was an incredible gentleman, and as Tom mentioned, he was big in stature too, as far as his presence when you saw him in that smile, and he and Joanne lived and breathed, really creating that museum and their friendship with Jackie and Gene Autry. But he was a force and someone that our children and grandchildren will watch those old movies, and we can say we knew Monty Hale and what he meant for the Western world, and particularly in the movies and being a singing cowboy. And so I just send my love out to Joanne because she worked very hard at the museum, and he shared her with all of us, and I know that they were great partners in life, and she will miss him dearly, as will we. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grill. Are there adjourned motions? If not, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. We'll be in session...